And with public comment, I believe we do have someone who was signed up.
Okay, I don't have um a big thing to say, just Nancy Brown. And I um just wanna say thank you, cause I was here last month asking if you would talk about the entry page and I thought on the agenda, I was very excited. And um I I brought the policy myself, just so I could follow along.
Absolutely, absolutely, thanks. Any uh committee member responses? It is the first agenda item, so we'll get right to it in seven. Um approval of the minutes from October seven. They were good by me. Madeline and Emily. Yep, there's approved, fantastic, we'll jump right into the discussion item. Uh agenda item four point one is a conversation about the entrance age uh policy and the update. Uh my quick update, and this will be for a longer conversation as well. It's having a conversation with district legal counsel to better understand uh what NICE said law states. Um it's always fascinating when you learn about New York State education law and what is and is not required. Uh as one example, I learned that school districts, public school district are not required to ride kindergarten. Um it's a matter of preference, um obviously, we choose to do so. Uh our pre K begins at age four, so I imagine the conversation about early childhood and entrance age would be, should we have a pre K program for children at age three? Um what they would call an extended or expanded universal pre K or U P K program. Um at this point in time, that has not been something the district has been actively involved in for three year olds. Um part of that is um more recently is a significant concern about federal funding. A large number of our funding for our pre K program comes from the federal government and title funds. Um and what it made me do though is go back and take a look at the last time we had an early childhood advisory council, which was in two thousand twenty one and two thousand twenty two. Uh that was work that was done in partnership with other programs that also run some of our pre K programs. And it may be something for the board to revisit again. Um one, the idea was to coordinate partners, coordinate uh people who are service providers and see um what and how best to serve young people. Uh I also learned, and folks may already know this, that it is the responsibility of the county to provide services for any child up to age three. And so um that would not be the school district responsibility, uh and I shouldn't say it that way. The law states that the county is responsible for providing those services. Um the district can be involved at age three. Um and if I'm not mistaken, I know we don't have, maybe the idea would be to ask Devon Jordan to join us as well. Um but our pre K programs seem to be fairly full, it's the last time I understood. Uh but I could be wrong about that, but I felt there was a waitlist, and that's why I read about the policy as well. So that's the quick legal update. Board house and uh Emily, I know this is the area that you worked in for a while as well, do you have anything you need to add there? Nancy, since you're here, any questions that you may have for us?
Um I I might have missed the the first part of what you said, did you, did you say definitively that you were saying? Um that districts cannot make the age.
That is correct, that that for the actual academic program, K through twelfth grade, that age is set by New York State, this individual school districts do not have any, my understanding, where I've been counsel, is that school districts do not have any say in setting that age. It is possible to have other pre K services that reach younger students. And if you're talking about the actual month, like December or October, if that's the month you're talking about, I'm I'm asking, I don't know.
Oh, well, currently, it's um as long as a student turns five before December first, they can enroll in kindergarten and they may not enroll. Um or at least if they did, we the district would not get the head start funding, I think that's how that works. I was just looking at education's uh law or policy, I don't know what the correct terminology is, but seventeen twelve. Kindergartens, the board of education of each school district may maintain kindergartens, which shall be free to resident children between the ages of four and six years, provided however, such board may fix a higher minimum age for admission to such kindergartens. So that meaning.
Uh for us, that means that's why we have a pre K pro uh pre K program.
It doesn't mean you can make a higher minimum age, meaning, let's say September first. That's how I was trying to understand that.
Yeah, it does, it does sound like the policy has some leeway um in New York.
A higher minimum age would mean, like instead of currently is four years and nine months, you could make it five years if you made it September first.
Which would be in alignment with most other states.
I I feel like I'm getting lost in what the ask is. Wh- what is the intended outcome?
So most, if you if you look at a table of um states and districts across the United States, we're an outlier, there's a handful of of pockets in the northeast where it's like it is here. Where you can start, you can have a fall birthday, you can be four when you start kindergarten. Most everywhere across the United States, kids have to be five when kindergarten starts. So September first, they're, they have to have a birthday by September first to turn five. Or sometimes it's even, you know, yeah, some of them are October, um even some of them are August or July. Um so that the kids are, the cohort is older um when they're attending kindergarten.
So is that the ask is to make the cohort older?
That is a common um topic of discussion among kindergarten teachers that um we are, and what the re- what the research I've seen is that um any, like when you ask, like what is the best age for kids to start school? Um it says, well, getting kids to school earlier is better, period. However, if you have a highly academic kindergarten program, then you want your your kindergartners to be an older when they start. So in other words, yes, have pre K programs, have early childhood. But if what if you're, if you're going to really um elevate academics, then actually you don't wanna be in conflict with the developmental needs of, you know, children to play in unstructured way and have that emergent curriculum going on. And and that's the lived experience of a lot of kindergarten teachers, is that we are trying to give fidelity to our curriculum and we are just pressuring children um in ways that is not in line with their developmental needs. Um and that we are, I spoke with a teacher the other day, she said that for one of her graduate programs, she actually, she was a reading teacher at the time and she did her a research paper because sixty percent of the kids in her intervention groups had fall birthday. Right? And numerically, that should be like twenty five percent of the kids would have birthdays in the fall. Um and that's simply because they're too.
So I think moving forward, what I'll do is I'll follow up with you directly, I um misunderstood the original ask, thinking that it was trying to see if we can get younger students involved in our programs, not that could we raise the age of the cohort, so those were the questions that I was asking and the framing of it. On a personal note, I continue to struggle with the idea, and this is not the challenge, anything you said or the research, but I struggle with the idea that we think just because children are a certain age, that they have certain academic abilities across the board. And the fact that we break up and divide children based upon age has never sat well with me. Because it's not a reflection of one's academic ability or skill set. But yet, that's how we do it, and I know that's the way it's been done, so I'd love to see some of that research as well. Um again, it's not about pre K or K, it's about just across the board. Um so let me follow up with my committee members, let me ask legal some additional questions. Um let me uh have a conversation with uh Devon Jordan as well, on what some of the programs are doing, um because now I think I better understood. I misunderstood the question, so.
Yeah, no, I apologize, um if I wasn't clear, I think um I was trying not to come with an agenda of like, hey, most kindergarten teachers feel that we would be serving our students better if they were older when they came, I was trying to more put that on you to do the research, that I've done my research. But uh.
Then we also notice other mitigating factors, though, right? So if that were the case, then we would need to have a strong infrastructure and support system for folks who would not fall into that area uh for a number of reasons, I mean, I'm even thinking about when what I was the primary carrier for our grandbaby, what age three, we're trying to find some academic program to get them in early, right? So what does that mean for community members that may rely on being in kindergarten at age four years and nine months as well, so for me, it's a cascading effect that, but it's a question for us to consider and one that I'm more than happy to engage, doesn't mean we'll change, but we need to have the the conversation.
Yeah, and I and I feel like um kindergarten teachers would really like to be a part of that conversation. Um cause I think we kind of talk about it amongst ourselves and, you know, just would love to have that open.
So whether or not we even reach to the early childhood advisory council, uh there's probably a way which we can set up a meeting for discussion. With board members and some other things to have that conversation.
We also have a community early childhood replacement council already, which means that that could be another avenue to be able to either utilize that council in relationship or at least kind of collaborate. Um because these kinds of conversations are happening all the time, and and like Sean said, this is not a a question of just what happens at kindergarten, but we should already, the community at large should already be having conversations about how to provide really high quality early childhood opportunities at low or no cost for free and affordable anyway, like the data is so clear about that as well. And so then it's less of a question of, you know, do they have somewhere to go, or are they in a in a in a strong learning environment? But instead of, is it a uh age appropriate learning environment? And what I think I hear you saying, which I totally agree with, is that especially, you know, when these laws were developed years and years ago, you know, we were still like taking naps in the middle of kindergarten, which is not happening anymore, and it is much more rigorous um for students, and and there is tons of research that shows like the difference. Now, there is research on both sides, of course, about the impact of what they call red shirting, of holding the kid back or having a kid start at a at an earlier age, but a lot of that research is based on most of the states that have it. Um that have kindergarten cut off closer to when kindergarten actually starts, and and there is a lot of research to support that. I can just say anecdotally for myself, that I had to have both appointments through um IVF, and I intentionally planned the IVF cycle so that they did not happen in August, or they, I did, my children were not gonna be born in August, September, and October. At least I didn't wanna have to deal with this, this is how much I was like living in the education world at the time. And then I moved my December fourth baby to one of the four states that has a summer as a cutoff, so it's very personally frustrating as well. But I I love the idea of having an opportunity for the district to be able to work in collaboration with the community to talk about a early childhood connection to K twelve, where both of them are kind of meeting the developmental needs of students at the appropriate times.
So for the time being, this will not be handled in policy, but there will be a follow up. Right? So at least we'll have the conversation and go from there, and then if need be, then we bring it back, have a conversation, but we'll be, we'll we'll be in touch, we'll try to set up a conversation for. Yep, thank you for raising, appreciate it. We're good with that agenda item. Uh brings us to four point two, this is just a notice for my board colleagues. Uh we have set on Tuesday, we'll be voting to set the public hearing date for January sixth for the um safety plan, uh we need to have a public hearing before the board can adopt it. And that will be a small resolution on Tuesday's agenda, just giving one more place of an announcement, so we can let people know as much as possible. The public safety plan, uh public safety plan, the safety plan is up on uh the ICSD website, easy to find just by taking a quick Google. Um and please take a look at it, Dan does a great job of keeping that up.
Thank you. We'll be sending it to the journal.
Yes.
Yeah, so that's. For uh up to post for forty five days, that's why the timeline is taking the length of this.
Yes, and with breaks and everything else in between in our meetings, that's how we came up with that date as well. Uh and I imagine we'll be working with our communications team to let folks know in advance of when this hearing will take place as well. Great, thank you. Uh agenda item four point three, um which is uh probably the main reason why we have such a phenomenal team assembled. Uh this is uh policy two two four five, student ex officio members to the board of education. Um we're under no pretense that this is gonna be a quick process. Uh the mandate came down from the beginning of the school year. We are fortunate um in many regards, again, that uh I think that's one of our board members has been saying that this was, he remembers board reps to the board in nineteen ninety nine. So we have a longstanding traditions. Uh so we're just sort of wading into seeing some of the conversations that come up. Um the policy that was sent around, um I think as I wrote to Judah, is a draft policy, it's standard template language that was pulled from the New York State School Board Association. It does not mean that we are moving anywhere in this direction, that's what's written there. We're just using it as a guide of what a policy could look like and what the state requires us to have some conversations. Amongst the three of us, we had a quick, we had some conversations about um one, what is the process for selecting ex officio members? Um is it the same as student reps? Are student reps the ex officio members? Is there a different process that folks should have? What is the number of reps and or ex officio members that we should consider? Um from a small city school district, it appears as I read the policy that we should have one from every high school. Um does it mean that that's withstand legal muster, but that might be the way which we are looking at it? And so we are again in the early stages of going to this policy and thinking about it and thinking what could be there. So before I say anymore, we have um our number of our student reps who have joined us, so thank you very much. Um and maybe I should ask what questions you all may have first to see where it may go. And I do not like the fact that we're separated on opposite sides, we're working on this together, this is a collaborative process. Try to get the best policy, and I'd be thinking about this not only for your time on the board, but what would this look like, right? Three, four, six years down the road, is sort of the way which I would recommend me think about.
I can start. Yeah, uh so I I guess there are a few things that we need to um like figure out that you listed. Um I was thinking, I think that a lot of the um, I I guess I should just speak for myself, but I was thinking that we should probably have I was thinking two ex officio um for members that would be elected like as representatives, but then um something that Lily had come up with, you wanna say it, yeah?
I mean, like, I feel like it gets into this situation where we don't wanna have too many people, cause it's also difficult for us, we're together, like, I know the four of us are all like, at least for IHS reps, we're all so busy with our other stuff too. And we wanna be able to collaborate on certain things and like make sure that we're on the same page. Um but if we have, like Judy was saying, like keeping the four of both of them are also elected ex officio, or we could do like a rotating thing, so like, I don't know how the cycle works or something to just where two people for each meeting are considered the ex officio um. Uh it gives us equal opportunity to be able to discuss things like that. Um yeah, and then it's not just like everyone is like talking so much, and that's just kind of the conversation.
Yeah, I think that would also prevent us from having to have um separate elections or appointments for ex officio members, cause the problem is if we have four board representatives elected and then just one of us is the ex officio, um then it becomes an issue of like one of us has a more of a voice than the other ones. And so I think if we get a ro- like a rotation, then we'd all have uh equal voice, and then I think we can keep the system where the student body is electing us. And I, if that, if possible, I'd like to keep it, the student body is electing us.
With the elections thing too, I understand there's also one in um someone within the district who likes not appointing a student, but something like that. I know that normally for running, you have to have like a letter of record or something um to. But if something like that would be. I guess there could be more like.
If I can just jump in for a sec, just, I think this is really exciting to have so many of you here to be able to have this conversation, and so I I wanna make sure that we use this time as best we can to really get into, I would love to hear from you about not just about tweaks that we can make in alignment with this new policy requirement, but I think that from our, well, from from my conversations with my fellow board members, what I think that I'm hearing and what I can say for sure is that I'm really interested in looking at the role from the very get go of like, is this, is this the way that we want to do it, do we want it? Do we want core from one school, do we want, like, it doesn't make sense for there to be an election process like this? What is the impact on um um on hearing from diverse voices, what is the impact of um of of the role that you are kind of like, that that like reps are asked to play, meaning like, is it to be here and I speak on behalf of the student body, is there an opportunity to have more um you know, have somebody from the board be a mentor, where you have more opportunity to really learn about the structures and functioning of a board like this, does it make sense for it to be a teacher who's um who's advising you versus a board member? Since it's really like this work that you're doing and not kind of the work within like the classroom or what your teacher is kind of responsible for um for teaching you, well, I'm interested in um yeah, like the the breakdown, like just so the whole thing, so I would, I would um welcome the opportunity for you to kind of like expand even more about what you're sharing and even like, we love exactly how this is, and we just wanna make sure that we have an equal opportunity to play the role of ex officio or you know, we don't feel like the way that we're doing this is allowing us to hear from the whole student body in a totally different way or so on and so forth. So just to invite them to expand that.
I think also too, for discussing about um wanting a sort of consistency or something like that, I think it would be difficult to implement something like ex officio as a whole new role. Um I know that a lot of people don't even understand what a student rep does. And that's been something that's been established for so long. Um but I guess it's not like a title, like, oh, it calls president, it calls secretary, you know, that is a common thing that people are used to. I feel like if we're using, I mean, like consistency as an important point, then I don't know, then kind of like, what's the point of having a lunch call? Because if you want something to be able to build upon that, then we can't achieve that in one year, and if we're switching out members, if we want new people to do, it's just such like a, it's a process.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I was just, we're slightly different, we have our, we have our democratic processes, all entrenched and whatnot, I guess, my biggest thing, I was just like flipping through this and kind of like looking at all the documentation from the NYSSBA. I think, I think it's the acronym, uh the language of the law just is super similar to the current rep policy, like, so I'm just kind of unclear on what the difference in responsibility benefit would be to even naming somebody as an ex officio compared to a rep. Cause I've only really found very minor ones, I guess, lately.
Yeah, so let me answer that question to you, or and I'm sure there's more.
Yeah.
Um the question is, we don't have an option.
Yeah.
Right? It's now New York, it's it's a law that you have to have an ex officio policy, we've been doing it and calling them reps. There will, there may be a change, doesn't mean we have to change all the process, but the re- the requirement is that the law is now asking us. And we've had a process that hasn't been passed by the board, right? Has, there has not been an adopted process. So is it by uh general election of the student body or at ASM, right? Like that we have to actually put into a policy and have the board vote on it. That has not been the case before, we just asked at the Go High School in LACS, hey, who are your reps? And folks have figured it out that way, so those are two of the things that will take place, just to give some example of that, it'd be a little bit more specific.
And if I could just add one, I think important piece, it's, I think what you all have probably already experienced is when you want to like jump in and have a conversation, that's often kind of not, that opportunity is not always granted. Um so I think that you're right, that the policy language is pretty similar, but I think the practice is that you, that your role isn't as much reflected on that, and a part of that is for any number of reasons, but it also, as you all have all acknowledged as well, like, it would be hard to do that with everyone, so we I think that the board, and I've only been on it for two years, but I've seen it much longer than that, like the board has kind of had to, you know, limit to some extent, the opportunity for like ongoing discussion because of that, and so I think that that's why to me, this is a really exciting opportunity to to um to put into policy and actually translate into practice, a more significant opportunity to weigh in on conversations and engaging discussions.
Just that point, think about a nine member board and seven student reps, right? That's how it's been operating for the past five or six years, right, so.
So are there other districts where student reps are allowed to have discourse with board members throughout the process?
I mean, a lot, yes, and a lot of districts haven't had student reps at all until now, but the ones that have, I mean, you probably know better than I, but the ones that I've spoken to, there's usually one to two student reps, and that's it. And and so then it creates, it's a lot more kind of viable to have those conversations, but I also would just say that student reps also are being kind of guided and and mentored in very different ways. Um and so sometimes the um the the areas of focus in other districts may be like far more limited, because it's much more um informed by like the entire student body, really saying like, this is the issue that I, like, these are the three issues we're hoping for you to focus on this year and bring to the board, like, there's lots of other processes that way that also influence the kind of discussions that they may elect to participate in during the board meetings.
So yeah, so any point in time, I mean, the one to student reps target is to ask questions as the, we're we're going through a meeting is to say, hey, can I ask more? And student reps have done that, again, through my entire time on the board as well. Um I think the other point that I want to highlight, just something that Emily was saying, is that our student reps als- also meet with various faculty, staff, and board members. Um I used to have monthly meetings with the ethical high school student reps for a period of time. Where we'd meet and activities and I, we would just get some feedback and talk about agenda items. Um I know some people all met with, a number of you all already met with Dr. Brown before, that's some communication. So there's other ways in which our student reps are involved in processes that the entire sort of general high school population doesn't have. I don't say they don't have the same access, it's just a, it's a easier group of folks to bring together to ask some questions, if that makes sense, or or you're all carrying issues our way, like, okay, we want this to happen, okay, let's sit down and have a conversation about what that looks like. This would be a little bit more spelled out, the ex officio role actually provides a little bit more um input, I would dare say, than our current student rep process. Uh that's the way with the law is written, it's kind of like, you know, you're at the table, right? You ask questions. You don't get a vote, unfortunately, right? You can't enter into an executive session. But beyond that, if you're part, you're a member of the board to influence how we're discussing, voting, thinking about ideas, et cetera. Um that's sort of what it, what it looks like.
Yeah, I I think um that would be valuable to have um like, like you said, we have nine board members and seven student reps, I think it would be smart to have um maybe one ex officio from LACS and one from IHS. But like I said, so as to not disrupt the processes that we already have, would it be possible to have um like a a different election process at IHS and LACS, so you can just keep the same things, okay?
Absolutely, and we're not making any changes for this year.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, this is not, this is, we're, we're on, we're, we're on this year, right?
Yeah.
We're talking about what we're gonna put in place for spring when those elections come up.
What do you think about the uh election process right now?
I I really like how we do it this year, we did a ranked choice this year, which is um a more equitable for voting, and I I think it worked pretty well. Um and I think the general student body electing for people actually is like a great way to um truly represent the the stu- the whole student body, because they're able to, so say like enough people vote for me that I get in, but like a lot of people don't want me in, but then everyone else wants like Lily or Jing Ying in. So then everyone gets a voice on the board, and so I think this is actually a pretty good way.
What about the the, uh you mentioned that it's like a, you need to get like a recommendation, like how easy is it to even become?
Oh, it's. It's like a, it's like a one sentence email, it's not like a letter of record that much.
It's more like.
It's more like.
This is my experience, like, I I've had this student in that class of mine.
Are we able to request like the process for each school, so that we have a better idea of from beginning to end, how it works and and how you guys are informed and.
Yeah. It's hard, I think Miss Dobmar has that written down somewhere, but I'm not sure.
She probably does.
Yeah.
Um I was in Miss Dobmar's position at one time, and I did not have kids have to get an approval. Because I thought that was a barrier, and students didn't need to when I, when we first, when I first went into that role, you had to have a hundred signatures. And that was, and and kids had to go around and get students to sign up for a hundred signatures, and I said, absolutely not. And to to be recommended, and somebody else had to recommend you to be in that role, and I said, no, a student can just nominate themselves.
So with that. What's the term in in promoting this before election?
Um, I would have to estimate
Email out a month before
Yeah, a month or two, and then the campaign cycle is like one or two weeks.
It's a week, right?
I think, I feel like it's two.
We can get it.
It's a pretty short
Um, and I think that's like the day the campaign starts. Uh, you're, there's like, I guess, a little bit of regulation, it's like you're limiting the amount of posters you get.
Yeah, you can't, you can't, um, you've got like pins or anything you can pay for.
And, and it's like, you can technically like
I think we can get like
Yeah, we have that somewhere, yeah.
Yes.
If you might just email me that I can get that over you, I'm afraid I will forget between
So, and I know LACS is a little different in terms.
Yeah, I can run through ours quickly, so.
Um, a few years back, uh, our system was kind of, we, we didn't really have a system. So we, our principal kind of just asked a few students. We decided we were gonna write a system. I was actually one of the people that wrote our system. So we came away with this like twelve-page like document that just lists out how you do it, all, all the regulations, rules. We have a similar system, uh, students or teachers nominate individual students to be there. We go through, we ask them, hey, do you wanna do this? Do you not wanna do this? They can decide. Uh, then they, they run their lots of posters up and we dedicated ASM where they give speeches to the school, detailing platforms, detailing how they're gonna, what they do if, if they get elected, uh, any issues they might tackle. Um, okay, and s- sometimes we organize a debate at much, like between candidates. Uh, after that, there's a one-week cycle of voting where we have, we have a relationship with the Tompkins County Election Board. They provide us some voting booths, some expertise. So we, we have, we make ballots, we, everybody comes up, they rank their top three candidates, submit the ballots. Uh, that, that, that happens at lunchtime and committee times of six period, uh, all, all week long. At the end of that, we have students uh under the oversight of the principal count the ballots and announce the winner next, a week after that.
Can you share, is that documented, something, is it in the playbook or is it?
It, uh, I can share you the document, it's subject sent to
Yeah.
Yes, please, that'd be great. I mean, I think part of what we're trying to do today is gather as much information as possible. So understanding the process is extremely important, because there are conversations about representation, about fairness, about equity, and then about just the process in general. And then for us, the next conversation is also about the roles and responsibilities to more clearly specify like what would, what are we expecting from students in this role? Then I, let me say it differently, what can students expect from us while they're serving this role? I hope that part makes sense, right? Like, I, I wanna flip that narrative where folks are helping us make better decisions.
And the election is in a Google form, correct?
Yeah, I, we found that's the easiest way to do it. Um, but then, I don't know how Miss Dobmar did the ranked choice this year. Did we use that online program or was that?
It was an online program.
Yeah. There's a program that takes all the ranked choice voting and um
Just calculate.
Yeah. But, yeah, it's an online vote, we found out that's, that's the easiest and most successful. Um, I will say, my, I, I do have a problem with the, our election system, that like a lot of kids do not know about it. So I know like sometimes when we do surveys, it'll be like, at the start of third period, there's time to do those surveys. But when we do elections, like, there's like one email that goes out.
So There's time during the, the school that you guys
Uh, I mean, it's a very, it's a very quick form, but like, I, I don't think, like, when we have the surveys, it's like teachers announce it and it's on the announcements. And it's like very clear, there's something going on. Um, and I, when I did my survey for the cell phone stuff, I got like eight hundred and fifty responses, but I, I don't think we got near that um for the elections, so.
That's all, yeah, I'm sorry, please.
I don't know if this would be feasible, but like how they do the, like, how LACS has the opportunity to speak to this one body? I know it's a little bit more difficult because of how big our chances is. Um, I do think that having a platform to be able to talk to the um students would be a little bit more helpful to actually know what the students want, because otherwise you're just seeing a name on I think, I think they've all been there where it's like, oh, you have to choose like a person for something. Choose a person name, oh, I've kind of heard of that, like, I guess that'd be okay. You don't really know what policies they want, because a lot of students are checking emails. I, we all maybe don't check our emails as much as we should. I think that, I mean, at least for me, tonight's not a good example of this, but I do tend to speak a bit more eloquently, like publicly in writing and it's being able to have the opportunity for students to exercise both like a speech format and written would be helpful, because what we're doing a lot of the time is speaking to you guys. And I think it's important to um be able to even like test it out for students who aren't sure if they exactly have on. Like, what is it you'd like to talk in front of your peers and adults? Because I think that's important still to have.
It also highlights that you all can send us emails as well and get responses. Uh, but as we're having this conversation, um, let's put out the things, let's put out ideas, right? The ideas, and let's not censor ourselves about what's possible. Like, I never thought about that, uh, right? Like, maybe there is a assembly that we try to do at one point in time and bring as many folks as possible. I don't think we've even thought about that as being, I know I haven't thought about it, so doesn't mean other folks have. But again, doesn't mean it would happen, but let's, you know, let's try to be innovative and creative when we're at.
I think it's a really valuable point, um, like allowing students to see how their board reps would be able to talk. Um, I, I was, obviously, public speaking is like, it's a really big part of this. Um, like we speak at every meeting, so I think being able to speak in front of a crowd is valuable.
What were you gonna say?
Um, I feel like if we're gonna talk about like voting procedure, is there a consensus that we keep the uh student vote right now?
But it's not, the, the real concern was that small city school districts are, were and are prohibited from using the format that we use. We are blessed in that we are grandparented in to use our current system. So we can, it's, it can stay on the list of things that we can do. We thought we were not gonna be able to do that, right? So that was a big concern for us as well, like, oh, now we gotta change up the entire process. We don't have to change the process, but I am hearing there's some suggestions, there are some things that we may wanna consider
Yeah.
about the process as well. So however we go about it, um, will, will work.
I think the general process that we have now is the best for our school and most representative. Um, but obviously, there are things that can't be changed. But I think like the student body election is something that I want to keep in mind.
I, I would be really interested in to see if you all had a way to actually survey your student body to see if they, if they feel that way. Um, I, I'm curious how many even participate in the election in the first place, um, and
What's the election data?
Yeah, like, what's the election data, like, curious even in the, like, demographic makeup of that information? And also just to hear from folks about it, if they're feeling like, I mean, every, like, it would, I, I think it would be really fascinating to everything from like, do you feel like you, you know, would you ever be interested in doing that, this? And if not, like, what holds you back from other two things like, you know? If you're, yeah, do you understand the process? And do you, you know, do you feel like um they, that the student reps are like representative, so you're like, it meets and, and um, I think that that would be really interesting to kind of get that feedback before you can communicate about whether it's really an effective process.
Is there like a upcoming mandated survey that we could send out along with this survey? I know it worked out really well last time for the cell phone policy survey.
Yeah, I think we're gonna, we should meet with Miss Dobmar and figure out what that looks like. And I also think that we can get election results for you. Um, I know in the past, one of my um curiosities is when you were voting for the board of the ad reps. It was ninth, tenth, and eleventh grade, um, fourth grade, because they were leaving, it, it wasn't the body that was represented. So that is my, I wonder too, um, are twelve seniors, are they voting for people who are going to represent when they're already gone? That wasn't the case prior, so.
I think it is now the case that seniors do vote, um, even though they're leaving. I, I'm impartial to whether they vote or not, honestly.
It also raises a question for me that I wrote down, hope we're talking, I'm wondering if this, the possibility on, on, all possibilities, right? Like, should it be a two-year term? Right, so people talk about sort of learning the process and being there. We've had some board reps for at least three years, may, maybe even more, maybe even more, maybe some of it all four years. Um, and so, uh, again, these are not ideas, not just thinking aloud, like, what would be the best purpose and may assert this role, yeah.
Yeah, that was kind of a point that I was also thinking about. And it's not, it's a difficult thing, because, well, that would be, I think, beneficial for us. So I'm actually, I think we're still, even if we've been knowing each other for a while, we're still learning how to work together for, if it was like this. Um, and it's like, you wanna be like, oh, I wanna appoint myself for another year of that. But even like in the future, it's beneficial for students, um. And then also too, I think it's different than like class officers, where it's like, oh, wait, this person's gonna be present for this year, like that kind of thing. Um, it's, sometimes I feel like student reps becomes a thing that's like people are just putting a vote in just to know. Because they're like, oh, it's also, I guess, but they don't really understand what it is, how it works, like, they're committed to it.
I can tell you it makes a difference for us in the board.
Yeah.
Right, our student reps have a pretty significant voice, uh, and board members pay a lot of attention to what our student reps say. So, uh, I, I can see where other folks may not get it, but I want you all to know that for us, it does make a difference.
My
Go ahead.
My problem with um a two-year term is that, um, already rising ninth graders can't run because they haven't been at the high school yet. Um, but if we were to have a two-year term, then that would effectively prevent rising seniors from running too, because then they would have to, they would be gone from the school after one year.
Yep.
I honestly think that a one-year term is fine. Um, I think s- sort of the precedent that's been set in the past few years is that once people are on the board as reps, they kind of stay on the board as reps, especially if they're doing well. I, like, I think all of us are doing well, uh-huh. And so I'm not really concerned about like teamwork and knowing the process, because obviously Jing Ying's been here for two years. Um, and Caidman, how long was Caidman here for? He was here for three years, and so he served the process. Yeah, Grace too, yeah. And I'm not, I'm not really concerned about having a two-year term, um.
Yeah, and again, I was just putting
Yeah, of course.
Door, so one thing
I'm sorry, I just wanted to add, because that, that just brings to mind that the whole point of having you guys being student representative is to give you the opportunity to experience this side of, you know, what it takes to represent, right? The, the body of students that you guys are part of. So to me, one of the main things that you guys get to do is not only experience it, but also invite your other students, your peers to participate and have an opportunity. And not just be the same people, but just empower them, that, you know, that they can come up, that they can show up, that they can vote, that they can be a part of the system. It's not just a specific amount of kids or a specific amount of, you know?
Yep.
Just takes from them.
I think one of the better ways that we could handle this as student reps is that we send out a big Google form to everybody. I know we did this in the past few years, but it hasn't worked really well. But if we could make a better announcement to the body, that way we could have it that they give their issues to us and have like a name attached so that they're not just trolling and saying something that's not really true. I want you to like search for issues at our school, but then also like some, sometimes we don't that have that much time, search for the issues. So if they came to us in a former kind of manner, then we can all tackle these simultaneously.
So that gets me to, so extremely helpful, I'm learning significantly, I feel like we're all learning this in the process, that's helpful for me. I'm often about sort of process-wise and what happens next. So learning some more about the actual specifics of the election process would help us in understanding about what that looks like. One, we'd have to capture that in a policy anyway, right? Or not, maybe not to answer the granular detail, but there'd have to be some reference of that. Learning more about, you know, the election and who participates in the elections would probably help for all of us to understand, you know, with the level of engagement is as well. And so those are one things, it's sort of just sort of how we choose. How many reps, a conversation, I also be interested in sort of polling each of your schools or trying to get more information and feedback about what your, you know, your peers think would be a good idea. And then what I'm really interested in at some point in time, and this is, and not to bring you all back to a policy meeting, but we're gonna invite you back to another policy meeting, is taking a look at some of the roles and responsibilities as well. I think that's one of the key things that we're interested in from a student perspective. Where do you see your voice being most impactful? Um, where do you see it? Because the way in which it's been set up in other districts is again, that there is one or two, um, but they are very actively involved in, right? The, the board proceedings, they get the agenda in advance, right? They're copied on a number of messages, as long as there's no privacy issues, that there's ways in which for us to also revamp the position to include more student voice than even while your voice is already impactful, but there's ways in which for us to do more. And so I think the way in which I would say it. So I'm just thinking about next steps of how we move forward.
Yeah, I'm just, sorry, just to piggyback on that, also really interested in um feedback about mentorship.
Yes.
Um, and how you think things are going right now in the current um structure and what that even sounds like to you? If you, like, does it sound like something that would be of interest to actually have a board member being more of a mentor? So that you have an opportunity to learn, kind of put that, and the process of the work in addition to just bringing the issues forward.
I think
Shall we, let's go, let's do it.
Okay, um, two things, I think one of the things is that we'll have a meeting tomorrow during lunch with our advisor. He's diligently typing away on her computer. Um, and we'll talk about these issues, I guess we'll put a Google Doc, and then we'll bring all these to the next policy meeting, which is
Uh, January, but feel free to send it
January.
Yeah, no, December, I like
Amazing, um, well
December.
Yeah, we'll publish, we'll also send out a survey and then have those results back to guys, so we can have all the Apple data that you guys want. And then I'm hoping that that will be our last policy meeting or
Uh, maybe Here, we'll figure something out, we'll
Is it shipping bags in the forward too?
Uh, I was also just gonna say, you guys were talking about like the data and stuff. I know, so, I'm also a president of communications department too, so if that, sometimes we felt like, send an email properly or like have to, and also email had a, like, like those clubs and information like that, um, that can also be something that we help work through with that because some of the like setup, organization of documents like that, might be more helpful to have more people working on that. Um, and also, just about like the mentorship stuff, I can see merit in having that and also what we're doing now. I think I have the essence for various things. I know like every other, I have no much as, because I have like meetings every day. Um, but, yeah, just something like that.
Time is a real commodity. Yeah, I mean, quick, couple of quick hits, um, I just wanted to mention LACS, like, we do send out a survey about every week or so from the board reps. We, we have that collected over and over. Occasionally, it's hard to find, uh, like, people just don't have issues, so they often just don't report it. But a lot of the, the best things we get is like help people in the halls. Or we have a weekly morning meeting, everybody piles into the, the gym, very short. Uh, we come up, we announce what's happened to the board, what's happening with the board. And often after that is when we get the best, uh, issues brought forward, is like when it's fresh in people's minds, we can speak face to face. Um, as, as well as that, with mentorship as well. We, we have, as part of our like holding system, we did like mandate that if you're a senior leaving, you, and then you're gonna have like a day to, like a hour and a half project time, just to like talk with the new members, say like, okay, this is how this works. So we're getting like, like, this is what happens here, this is the days you have to show up, but also these meetings are kind of weird. Here's when, here's when you really gotta respond to this, you know, but this one's kind of not all that bad. Um, so we, we have that worked out pretty well, yeah. And I guess, but with teacher mentorship as well, we kind of fly solo as a representative group. We don't really have a teacher mentor at the moment. Technically, our principal Keith is in that role, but we, we're a bit more independent. So I guess with the ex officio, I, I didn't see anything in the actual text being like you need to have a teacher mentor, but I'm just wondering how it might work with that thing, but just like general question.
I have a quick question, because I know like, um, you guys send a lot, they can send everything um through email. But what about the kids that don't have access to a computer or internet at home? Um, do we make anything, do we have anything currently in our schools where kids can just write a note real quick and you guys can, you know, look into that? Do we have, um, any by legal services for kids that don't necessarily feel, you know, that they can't express themselves correctly? Or, you know, it's with disabilities, they can't, you know, have access to certain places at a time. Um, things like that, it would be very helpful to look into.
Yeah, I think a really part, like a beneficial part of the LACS system is that they meet with the students directly and they give feedback. And that will probably bring more engagement than actually sending out an email or a Google form. So I'm thinking since we have four board reps and there's four grades, there's a way that we could just organize like a feedback session with all the grades.
Even if it's just something monthly, because I know weekly would be really hard for us, but you have to do something monthly.
Monthly, we can all sit at a table and we can bring in different grades and they can give us issues. And then also, they don't feel comfortable expressing their issues. They don't feel comfortable expressing their issues publicly, then I'm guessing we can put like a physical form that they can go into like the counselor's office and submit something. And we'll always like we'll just read that and since we have four people, that'll be fine.
A quick, a quick suggestion, if I could, right, we live in an academic community that loves critique. Right, like that, we we do it well, we're very good at it. We are not nearly as good at building, and so part of it would be is not just finding what issues folks may have, but what's working well.
Yeah.
Right, because that is equally as powerful and enforcing and making sure that things get funded or that it's on the board's agenda. So of course we want to know what's not going well. We need to know that, and we also need to know what is going well as well, if that makes sense. Yeah, I know, I agree, because you have been as well, yes.
Oh, can I have a play rehearsal? Actually, I'll see them play, it's next weekend. And there's a Thursday night, what's that?
Is that Shrek?
Shrek?
I'll be there. So thank you, uh, any, again, this is gonna be a slow process, right, so I know you don't want to keep coming to. Policy committee meetings, we're not gonna ask that from you, um, but the feedback will be helpful, so anything that. Else that we should know before we move on to the next agenda.
I never had a chance to respond to, um, like they were a question, but I also, I I agree, Julian, I've actually. Got my best feedback in the hallway, and I I get a lot of, um, texts and DMs and emails. Um, and invitations to clubs to go talk to people, um, and that's where I get a lot of my information, but like also. Kind of like Jinging was saying, like, I think part of the job of being a board rep is like looking for things. Um, because often people aren't thinking about their problems, they like have a problem, they're like, that's annoying, and they. Kind of forget about it sometimes, but part of being a board rep is kind of having like searching for problems and fixing them, so that's. My experience with that, but yeah.
I can send send an email to one of you guys to just say about what my thoughts are there. Also, I know that like pre-registered for voting was another thing that you guys were talking about as well.
Yes.
I know I'm pre-registered, that's also sometimes just important to me to have, especially in today's. Society, but um, I think that a lot of people just don't know about it or understand, I think. I'm lucky enough that my parents, like, I've been able to sit down, like, and see, like, how to do bills, so like, how to like. Like processes like that, like going to the whenever they're. Um, voting and stuff like that, and I think a lot of people's parents don't. Provide that opportunity, which is, there's nothing wrong with that in a sense of me, but just like. I guess making people aware to be like, oh, like, maybe I do want to vote, maybe I want to like.
Well, we're, that's a nice, we are required by law to help folks register and pre-register.
Yeah.
Uh, to vote, so. Um, well, again, thank you, feel free to email us. I know there's a couple of plans moving forward. I'll work with Tricia and our board colleagues about some next steps and concrete next steps and welcome any ideas that you have about next steps as well, yeah.
Yes, I say, uh, Tricia, I I showed you like our big system, like a flow chart we made to kind of explain it. We have like a big. Google Drive folder of like old data, old like uh records, like explainer slideshows, here's this, 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 we can provide that if you. The tickle the data as well, certainly important.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Feel feel free to stay.
Me too.
Yes, I can see that as well. Uh, so the next agenda item, being mindful of time, is around uh student voter registration and pre-registration. Um, we, seems like we do registrations um at both the LACS and the high school in a a pretty good manners. Um, I think more of our question was about how are we gonna get to the pre-registration aspect of this new requirement. And thank you for joining us, Ms. Arnold, we appreciate it. And I don't know, uh, again, this, we're also here to learn before we go forward with this policy and see what's possible. Thank you. Good luck tomorrow with your tests.
So this, if I, should I go ahead? So this summer, um, we met with Madeline and. She met with the admin team at the medical high school. And we got to brainstorm some ideas of how to um make sure that we were meeting this new law. Some of the things that um we came up with during that meeting were uh. Student news, and I will say it just went in my weekly student news that I just started. Few weeks back, I guess, maybe a month now, every week it was came from a student that said, you said good things to my family, but really it's things that I need to know about. And they're young adults and it's true, a lot of it is um their their responsibility to sign up, so it went in there with the link. There's a link that you can online register, which looks pretty. Pretty, I would say probably within a minute to two minutes, a student would be registered. But also talking about what are some of the mandatory classes that students take, that this information can be available. Did reach out to the election, the Board of Elections to see how do we get the paper. Copies for students and then what is the process of handing that in? Does that after a student completes that at the high school, then where do we go? Do we bring that back? How do they want it? So just trying to figure out what the process is. I do not have answers yet for that. Um, having the forms available in student services, some of the things that happen is tabling at lunchtime. And that might be even a time that Board of Ed members want to come and table uh and have those forms available. We talked this summer too about the, not just here in the link or here's the paper, but the importance of why. Why would want to pre-register? For that, I did go back and look, I I did not put it in my community news, but I think that's also a place. Where families, when we um listen to Lily, that families might be like, oh, I didn't even know that you could pre-register. And this is one reason why, or many reasons why you might want to. Um, we looked at, you know, kids take global, they take economics, um, is there a way to, as I was listening to the group. Bring it into clubs and student council. So I, we're open to ideas, but those were our initial thoughts, um, when we met and where we're headed.
Morning announcements, I didn't talk about too.
Yeah, one thing we do, the announcements happen at third period. Again, there's a few more minutes that are attached to third period. That teachers do not want announcements before then because they want the same amount of minutes for each class. And it's kind of like the emails. Um, how many are really listening, it's in between periods, and it's not a reason for us not to do it. It's it's one. And thinking also H courtyard with seniors hang out, that there might maybe. It's it's that. Now not having the cell phone policy, you no longer can have the key bar code that goes to sign up and like, so how do you get that out there? Mm-hmm, I know the paper copies are gonna be important.
Yeah. Well, it also makes me think that we can just mail. Uh, form homes everybody, the different things for.
And I think about confidential information of on those forms, then where are they, where are they stored? Where are they secure? Who is the, who are those students handing them to? So that is one of my eye wonders also with that.
Yep, that's a great. Definitely, you're.
Yeah, I mean, I can kind of. I know, I I always has a very different situation for my chest, we have far fewer students above sixteen and. A student by that's predisposed to Democrat engagement just by virtue of going to LACS and. That's definitely helped a lot to start, just because everyone's so used to voting, that's just the natural next step. In terms of action, we've had the Tompkins County Legal Women Voters come in, they come in usually at the end of the year, they table. And they 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 know what their experience of like getting people to come over to them, get they have like, they have candy, they have everything, and they usually actually set up. Right by the lunch bar. So everybody's gonna get lunch, they see it, they're like, I should, they're like, are you eleven, grade a twelve grader, you should pre-register or vote, and. That's very successful, I'm pretty sure probably every single student above sixteen is pre-registered at. At at LACS, I'd be shocked if there there wasn't, um, DMV, getting a driver's license, getting a permit, that. Really is where I've heard the most people pre-registered though and kind of just continuing those opportunities, like. What they do, they're getting it, like, you're you're already doing something, okay, let's add, let's just. It's one more form, but it's 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 done, so integrating into systems like that's where.
Yeah, the only issue is that we're required to do it to be in the school.
Okay.
So we have to demonstrate and prove what our processes are to support this. DMV, you know, it's great, but then again, we also know that everyone drives.
I mean, even just that, then when you send home the forms at the start of the school year, put that in there, when you send. Home, when you send like summer schedule, put that in there, you know they're turning sixteen, you know they're gonna be ready, just send it, put it with them.
I'm gonna explore the calls to that.
I I checked in on Keith briefly too, and couldn't make it seem any good, um, but. Yeah, he's working on a number of things, making sure counseling team has forms available in the office. Uh, working it through family group.
Yeah.
Uh, through slide decks.
Yep.
Um, maybe having multiple ASASMs where this discussed, and then. Um, uh, working with Jeff Furman.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
For uh more registration drive, but maybe even broader, I know. Um, that might be something that that the high school's interested in.
I think they were Monday work last year, I had to work with Jeff.
Yes, I spent a number of years at Jack Potts, worked on voter registration, I know when I was prior at the high, at the high school prior to now.
Okay.
I really love the idea that Tompkins kind of made it one of the voters, I'm also thinking the Board of Election coming.
Everyone, Dan, um, my dad, Dan at the Board of, uh, Board of Election, great with that sort of organization.
It's a lot of dance.
It's a lot of dance, especially administration.
I wonder too, like, what, like, how do we collect data on what our impact is? On. Students that register uh because of what we've done at the school. How do we know we're gonna have impact? How do we measure that at all?
How many are already registered and then we start from?
Yeah.
From where was the start of process and they start collecting every year?
Is it because we went to the DMV or is it because we gave candy and had Tompkins County League of Voters or. Ms. Arnold's message and heard news? Or just, those are things that were there. And are there certain things that would get more of an impact that we will do more moving forward?
I guess that's for us to continue to consider, especially. Uh, our demographic, which is a little bit more transient upon graduation from high school, so. They may have been registered in Tompkins Colony, but they're voting in Sullivan Colony or someplace else, right? Um, I'd be intrigued by that as well. Uh, maybe this is also, I don't know why I didn't think about it, um. But maybe we can schedule to my policy committee members, a conversation with someone in the Board of Elections, just to get their ideas that, um. You know, as one example, when I voted, and I don't know if this is for Tricia as well, when I voted last week, uh. They had new systems that print ballots on the fly. So you never run out of ballots. I was like, whoa, why aren't we using those? And they're like, well. We have a longer conversation, so I'll follow you about that. But again, the thing that I just have never thought about before, right, that why are we paying for ballots in advance? We have this new. Software that can do that, and I wonder if there's something that's true around pre-registration as well, that's probably something that we hadn't thought about that. Other folks are doing.
Well, I think that this conversation is really helpful and I have ideas as well about ways to outreach more students, I also. The, we pulled a bunch of policy examples and, uh. While out of interest and to kind of like support the schools, we could certainly follow up with Board of Election and other things. It looks like the policies themselves though are pretty like limited in nature and that we can give them some examples of. You know, some very like broad examples, just like some of the policies that. Um, we saw, like, the most specific example I saw was. Um, the district will meet these obligations by doing things such as displaying registration and pre-registration materials in district and school offices. And distributing registration, pre-registration materials at student clubs, or another one was. Um. Don't meet the the applications by offering registration, pre-registration materials for social studies classes at different times of years. As well as operating in person registration, pre-registration by the League of Women Voters twice a year. Um, so just to say that like. As much as I always love to stick my head into everything and and actually it helped kind of. Implement the policies, we also can take a pretty limited role, like I'm I'm so glad to hear and I, you know, heard from teachers from both of your schools. Talking about all the great work that's already being done, um, it sounds like you've already done a lot of thinking, you're already implementing some of these things, so just in the interest of. Where our responsibilities and 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 yours begin, I think to some extent we can just. Kind of write the policy and say that we are directing the principals of the schools to, you know, develop these strategies that emphasize. One or two of the things, and then it sounds like we would be doing much more than that. Um.
The policy will be written vague for lack of better.
Right, exactly, so how much we really need to, like, I think that we basically personally think that we like have enough to just write the policy. Now, it's very exciting, like, I would love to, and maybe even in the policy, to your point, like. Do we want to hear back about how it's going? Do we, do we ever want to see? Data, like, we might, we could think about those kinds of things, but I hate to, like, create more work both on our end or or yours. Really, we just need to write a few things down. Um, and just because I have the floor, even though this is exactly what I was saying, we don't need to do. I was thinking that you got, like, there's so many good things happening in these, in the government classes, which are similar things, but then I've heard. Is happening in those government classes, and to me, I was like, let's. If I was the the teacher of those students, I would love to help. Work with them to have part of their grades, because that's different from the ones who are actually getting the information to do the like. Do you need to go visit a home room? And like, they're being educated on all of these, like the processes of voter registration, how to be a good citizen, like all these amazing things. And like, how could they be empowered to be the ones that are tabling or, you know, teaching younger students about this who are not yet. You know, in those senior classes, I think that would be a very.
Yeah, well, part of that class is volunteer hours, so.
Yeah.
Great. Way to get volunteer hours by going to.
Yeah.
All right, so I think the next thing we do for us would be to uh find a way. To write the policy outside of a policy meeting. Very vague language, send it around, and it would be good as we talk about it to share with our board colleagues. Some of the things that we know are already going around and happening at school, some of the idea generation that's taking place. That would be helpful, I think it's. So, perfect.
I was gonna mention, like, I guess, the most effective ways for, uh, I guess, oh, compared to the Clyde survey. We did, we do that in, oh, when we're family, this we call it, and all teachers are shared on a certain agenda. For what their primary group meeting or like period could include, and and either could include or very much should include. For example, should include this Clyde survey, which worked well, is if it should include this, then just like having a pre-prepared slideshow, having materials that. A teacher can just present, show students and be like, okay, if you are above the age of sixteen, here's how to go pre-register, here's the materials, here's. All the information you need, and here's a packet to take home to your parents in case they didn't sign something like that, really is effective. It just, it gets it in the head and it and it gives you the like the action step on how to do it. And I guess, since we don't do government class, we do a civics ASI as well, we could add that just a bit ago. Be something like just, I really hope we stay on that soon.
Great, all right, appreciate everyone's time, thank you for that, we'll come back with that, uh, that policy. The two policies we just discussed, the votes be on next policy, uh, community agenda, um. That is, we'll hopefully have a draft of, uh, holder and, uh, Richard and Pre-Order. Uh, next agenda item is four point five, this is naming district facilities and spaces. Uh, Madeline and Emily and I did have a meeting to talk. Uh, we we, Tricia did a good job of giving us a number of examples. Uh, Emily went through and did some uh brain mapping of these examples of what they include, and then we were having. Some conversations about what this policy could look like. Still some conversations about whether or not the district needs a policy, I have the mindset that we do need a policy. Just given the number of requests that come up um for future spaces as well. And um I don't think that we came up with a policy, but we did come up with some questions. To consider and to think about, right, I I see you found, I found the brainstorming document as well, if you found it. Um, and so I don't know what is the best use of our time here. Uh, is it something that we should bring to the whole board to have a conversation about at a board meeting? With some of the things that we've learned and get some feedback, is it just that we should move forward and write a policy? Uh, and then use that as a draft moving forward, um.
I think we should do that, and it seems like, I feel like at the end of our meeting, we identified a. Uh, another district's policy that we liked a lot. It would probably be helpful to have something to respond to for folks, and we can. We can bullet out the kind of areas that we were most interested in to help them see kind of where. If they felt that way too, if they felt that during the two weeks, but it's probably helpful to have something to respond to.
Yeah, that was the central, I slipped, I slipped, I'm not sure how you pronounce it, my apologies to folks in Ohio, uh. Yeah, that was the central, I slipped, I slipped, I'm not sure how you pronounce it, my apologies to folks in my, uh, say it again. There you go. Uh, they had a form that included an application. Uh, it included, um, some, uh, written rationale about why this space. And they also identified and tried to clearly articulate what spaces or what kinds of spaces. Um, just by way of locally, in the past couple of years, we've been asked to name a school library. We've been asked to name a school gym, uh, we've been asked to name a couple of years ago, a baseball field. Uh, so it takes other places are talking about naming schools. So I think part of our conversation would be to be a little bit more dialogue about what we're talking about, what kind of spaces we're talking about. Under what circumstances, um, and then, you know, there are some other things as well, like, is there a cost to the district? Is, you know, are there additional liability that may come up that we don't have anticipated? Uh, and so I felt like we had a great conversation, it just was. Actually, a little overwhelming, like, oh, there's an awful lot to consider simply in just naming the space. And then does that space get hold on to that name for a five-year period that it can't be renamed again or? As we've experienced in our own nation, maybe there's some names we wanna change, right? Like, what does that look like? And so. Um, that's sort of what we found ourselves. So if the goal would be that we wanna sit down and write a policy, then. Uh, I'm fine with that as well. It's gonna be a conversation with the whole board no matter what.
Yeah, I guess my own follow-up to you is, um, we also talked about that this might be an area where the community has. Um, input that they'd like to share. Uh, and so having a policy drafted for the board to respond to, I think it's real important. Is there anything that we, so that we can keep this moving? Is there anything that we can do in the interim, like through communications of like one of those like? Hey, the board, this is something the board is like thinking about, these are some of the big, like you were just saying, like. If we identified like the five or whatever components that we thought might be most. Triggering of people's opinions and somehow create like some easy ways of. Even just inviting them to do that. I'm thinking about what we did for the cell phone policies like last year, like. They're thinking about this, like submit, let's talk if you want, or something.
Yeah, Katie, do we do that? And the insider ever have we? Is some of it sort of interactive, like a little box, like, hey, please give us some feedback?
Yeah, I know it is. In a bit like survey question.
Yeah.
I mean, they're not, they don't get it. Depends on the topic.
Yeah, it depends on the topic, absolutely. But it, it probably is worthwhile to do something like that. One, it just to. Another form of communication, letting folks know we're talking about it. Um, and then two, it does, you know, for folks who care, then they will, they'll let us know. Um.
I mean, we can even like partner with. Um. Principals who are setting out there like. Whatever, and they can like, just say, just to draw your attention to them. Just be like, through rate. Yeah. Because you do it at the same time, it's all I think.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So what, what would be, you know, we have a few minutes, um, what would be questions or a question that we'd like? You know, either principals or whoever to, to ask their communities.
These were, these were like the main topics, so. I think that the ones that I remember jumping out to me was, um.
A big engine process, of a big toilet.
I think we need to decide that. More like what would they feel, like, like the candidates, we talked about, like, do they need to have the influence of the district? Um, to, you know, like something around that, like how much are people going to care if? I feel like that's something that when people will like care. A lot about, maybe instead of like, what would you like the process to be, we could say, and maybe this would have to be later on, but more like. This is what the district is thinking about the process to be, you know. A wheel overlooking something.
That's what I was mentioning, the, the, the.
I feel like that's.
The survey was gonna be like, more kind of like.
Feedback on it. Yeah, I guess I was trying to get ahead of it a little bit with some of the like big things. But yes, I think, but that's gonna be like, we talk to the board. Uh, the board, you know, draft a policy, then we will.
But I think that would be better because then that way we are.
Okay.
You know, creating some type of structure.
That's fair.
I'm in complete agreement. I'm running my calendar in my head, like, okay, when are we gonna get together to make this happen?
To make, to drafting the policy.
To drafting the policy. And I think we do have, yeah, I'm looking at the example that we all sort of agreed on. There's some things that, language that we know that we would not use. Um, but I'm wondering if we can just sort of put this into a Google Doc and then just start wordsmithing it. That would match our local community as an example, just to have something for people to look at and then say, hey, what are we missing? What do you think? Feedback, suggestions. Um, we could probably do that over in L as well. And I, I literally will plan on cutting these two from here. Alright.
Set our, set a goal for January for the full board meeting, that means.
Okay, that makes sense. That's, that's doable, not to take on too much.
We don't need to rush. I mean, I don't think this is something that needs to be rushed.
Yeah, yes, I, I, well, I don't wanna rush intuitive, um, but we do have people who've been asking and, and there are some facilities. Program, perhaps that are happening that could possibly be impacted by something like this in this direction.
I mean, we could make the goal, but December.
I think it's about being honest with ourselves between holidays and everything else. And if we're gonna really focus on the ex officio, which I am also vested in, I'd like to spend our energy for December there. And this we can have ready to go. We can have this ready to go for the January Policy Committee with an expectation that it'd be on the first meeting in.
Yeah.
So, so work. Um, Dan, I know this would impact you, uh, and stick with me, I'm not necessarily talking just to you.
Okay.
But some of the things that we were thinking about and considering, right, like, again, types of spaces, who could be named?
Sure.
One conversation that came up before when this happened, should the person? This is a horrible way of saying it, but should the person be deceased? Are they someone living in our community, right? As an honorary? What are the procedures? Does it go to the superintendent first and then the board?
Sure.
Is there a community vote? I mean, these are just some of the things that we were exploring. And I'll share with you this document as well, so.
I'd be happy to help, yeah.
Because it'd be interesting giving your perspective about something that, you know, knowing the spaces, like, what are some things that we may be missing?
Yeah, I mean, the, the space that just comes up to, uh, top of my head is the new stem wing that you have the. Um, will be complete, um, this summer. Say that would be the first.
Absolutely.
That would be the first space.
And that was our question, can you buy a space, right? I mean, these are, there are some districts that, you know. Your financial contribution can get your name on something, right? Like, so those are some of the things that we'll be thinking about, so.
I'd be happy to help.
Um, I will include you on this document that we have here and then we'll do some work as a policy committee between now and January. And folks, please feel free to send reminders, I never take offense. Does that part work? Alright, we're coming back to that. Thank you all very much. More to follow shortly. Um, the last agenda item are possible policies, policies for deletion, um. Uh, these we do not have to look at, they are not necessarily, um, ones that need to be there. Uh. Emily Tracy Arm at one point in time created a list of policies that were at least forty years old. Um, all of them, the ones that we are looking at were last adopted and or updated before nineteen eighty. So at least forty-five years old. Um, some of them are repetitive and so the ones that I looked at. Thought that we could have some conversation about, um, was one policy five, three, one, one point four, which is damage to property. Um, the way in which it's written, part of it is already captured in our code of conduct. There's other ways in which the language that is used is outdated. And so we're thinking that could be a possible policy for, uh, for deletion. So, quick thoughts about that policy, I'm trying to pull it up now as well.
That might get rid of that. Very outdated or unfortunate. Unnecessary of that.
It's just one that was like nineteen seventy-nine or something like that.
Seventy-four.
Seventy-four.
Seventy-four, yes.
I mean, you know.
It's mainly about injuring, uh, defacing books.
Yes. And a.
Not familiar with it, with the book injury, but.
So, we're okay with putting this forward to the board, at least, uh, my policies aren't pulling up for some reason, so. Oh, the agenda of more gods, thanks. I don't know why, um, alright, so. I would love to see it, actually.
Yeah, and it's also, this was the one where it's actually requiring students to pay damages. It's, it's one sentence, it's a people who shall be guilty of defacing or injuring books or other school properties shall pay for damages. And be subject to such penalty as the nature of the offense may require.
Okay. Let's put it up, no, I, I, yeah, I got it, I'm good. But just reference, where's the reference?
Regulations for the maintenance of public order.
Which is not a policy that we have.
Fifteen twenty.
Or I don't believe it's a policy that I don't recall seeing. Uh, I don't know why I can't. Um, okay, um, policy five, two, five, zero, student activities. Maybe this will work.
This was just like all over the map. We talked about that they are all reflected in various, um, other policies. It jumps around from. Trips to student organizations, to accountability, to finances, to. Ticket systems, to use of buildings.
Forage for sport. About that in nineteen sixty-five.
Yeah, and then updated in seventy-nine, so, right, I think again, mostly since we either are outdated or we have. And other policies. So I'm putting it up, putting it up for deletion.
Yep.
And also it's use of buildings. We just did, we spent all that time on the buildings.
It wasn't that, we didn't spend that much.
No, no.
Can you actually update this language for us?
I'm using chat.
Major dances and the silver ball shall not go later than one AM.
Well, and so that, the part of the policy deletion, it would be to explore, see that any part of it would need to be someplace else, right? Um, but I'm actually shocked nineteen sixty-five, they're talking about one, one AM, but that is what it is. Uh, five, six, zero, one was another policy that we were considering, and that is school lunches. Um, it's making reference to the National School Lunch Act of nineteen forty-five. And all of its amendments, we thought that maybe some things have changed since then and turned to our school lunch program. Um, so, uh, I, and there's, if I'm not mistaken, isn't there a procedure for it as well? So fifty-six oh one dash P. And that says the Board of Education of ICSD approves the extension to, of the offer versus. Service position of the National School Lunch Act to boy in middle school. Yeah, that's gotta go. I mean, it's only to it, and then do it, yeah.
So, I think that, I mean, it sounds like the procedure definitely needs to go, and remembering now. Uh, this, this, uh, this policy, this national lunch program is still in effect. We had talked about adding records to the MO program because that was missing from this. Otherwise, I don't think, I don't know that we need a policy on the lunch program, but there's nothing. Inaccurate or wrong necessarily with this, it just isn't reflective. We would just need to add the.
Well, yes, but it's not even, and keeping with our practice as an example, right, second paragraph, it is understood that in keeping with these programs, a school dish will serve free. And reduce lunch, the children who are unable to pay the full price, probably not language that we would use that way. Um, and we have schools where every child gets a free lunch, right? So it doesn't mean that we would change the language to reflect that. Um, and so maybe this is a question for us to ask legal counsel about. If there's a need for a school lunch policy, but I agree that procedure, we know we can delete. So fifty-six oh one dash P, we can delete, yeah.
Um, so for the annual notices this year, we did work with. Like, we still linked to this policy, but we changed the language completely.
Can you send us that notice? That'd be great. So, we're, so for the time being, we'll put. Five, six, zero, one as a policy for us to review. Five, six, oh, one dash P will up for deletion. And especially because it only refers to boy and do it. Yes. I, I, I wonder what, um, I'm curious what sparked that, I'm not gonna lie to you. So maybe at one point in time, did the school lunch program change that was only K five?
Yeah, I don't know, it's strange that it's just saying those specific grades. That's probably tied to why it was created.
Yeah.
There was a gap.
Sure, this is nothing about EFC High School.
Right.
Y seventy-nine, LSCS created, alright, so if that's okay with everyone, keep. Five, six, oh, one for review, looking at the new language that we may need, but delete the current procedure which seems outdated.
Okay, and so with the new language, we're either, we can either just build new policy based on. Okay, sentence or, but we're, but you're also going to reach out to and find out.
You, you're probably not even.
Yeah, um, well. I think I would like a policy. Let me back up. I'm thinking if I'm a parent or caregiver. And I'm, you know, new to the district, I may wanna know, I may be looking for it. So that I think to this, for me, it's a little bit different than some other policies. Like, I don't know if I'm gonna be looking for our damage to textbooks and how you reimburse, uh, but I will ask, we'll, we'll ask to also. What is the requirement? Um, and, uh, we'll, for the time being. Plan on putting up for our next board agenda. It won't be on Tuesday, it'll be in December. Um, five, three, one, one, dash, four, five, two, five, zero, and five, six, zero, one, dash, P. Putting those up for deletion. And then we'll continue more work on the school. So for our next policy committee, which is first week in December. Um, we're gonna come back, we're gonna last and answer, well, this one we're not gonna do in policy, so we'll follow up with you directly. About interest age, uh, we will do student ex officio members. Um, we'll have a draft, we vote of, uh, student voter registration and, um. Maybe that's enough for the right now.
Sorry, what did you say?
Uh, that will be up on the December meeting.
For.
For continued conversation, discussion, we're gonna get some, the students said they're gonna find some data and come back to us. And I'll plan on reading them as well and ask them to take a look at their roles section. And responsibilities and see if they have some feedback there. Um, as well as Madeline's idea to reach out to, you know, some of their peers to get some feedback as well. Um.
To get them homework.
Yeah. Please.
I said about the school, which is to, I worry about getting rid of that policy, we don't know how long free, um, meals are going to be.
Yeah, that's true.
And I have been in situations where students who do not have payment.
Yep.
Um, I would. I'd want a policy to protect, only board, we don't know how long, um, and we wanna make sure our kids aren't bad.
Yep.
We weren't even sure who. This year, right, we were waiting on, uh, state legislators, legislators to.
Yeah, it's, it's a hard conversation that come off of as people have just gone forty-five days without benefits.
Right, right. It's a good point.
And we don't know what, what our climate is going to be.
So let's think about how to rewrite that policy and at least what we may wanna do or try to commit to here. I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Uh, but the procedure, um, we can get away with it. And then if there are other policies that we can take a look at that may be up for deletion for, I'll send that link to everybody and we'll go from there. If we, um, Emily, I know you said that you may, did, if I heard correctly, I'm volunteering you. Uh, to create a draft of the student voter registrations.
Yeah.
And we can have that for the December meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Um, then, I think that, that works for us. Go on from there. Yes, you may bring a policy our way.
Well, I was, I work with librarians now. And they were asking, uh, for, for us to discuss a few policies, but I think. I think it might be best for a few of us to meet with them and see what the, what their desire is. It's, it's policy, um, they want us to look at policy fourteen twenty, complaints about instructional and library materials.
Yeah.
And policy forty-three thirteen, library materials selection, it's hard to buy college. Looking at me over. But he. But he, um, but I think it'd be good if we met the librarians to see what this specific asks, they have done some pre-work already.
Yeah.
Um, um, but I think, um, a conversation would be great. And I don't know if that's the next meeting or maybe a few meet, a few meetings down.
Sure, um, yeah, we are already been talking about fourteen twenty and fourteen twenty R, that they may need to be updated. Um. This is a response to an email that the board received, but asking a little bit more specific. Details about process, um, and so we're really looking at some of our policies and realize that we don't mention things like you can also go to the commissioner. Right, so there's gotta be things like that that we should include, um, and so I would love to hear what the librarians' concerns are. Um, again, especially in a current climate, especially with the Supreme Court case that.
Yes.
Provides parents the opportunity to opt out of materials.
I think that's exactly why they wanna bring it.
Alright, so.
Good timing.
Yeah, okay. Alright, so we'll wait on that, that'll be, that won't be an agenda item, that'll be a meeting we'll follow from there.
Yes.
Fantastic.
Thanks.
We're good, everybody?
Yeah.
Nice. Alright, we'll, we'll close the meeting, thank you, Tricia. For your flexibility, thank you, see you about, and beauty, and Karen, thank you as well for joining us.
Yes, thank you.